So I think the logical place to start is for you to tell us a little bit about what has prompted your candidacy, why you're running, and as best you can describe how you think your service on the city council would make a difference.
I think, well, it all started with the Maybell project. I think before that I was very much into emergency preparedness and I was one of the leaders on the citywide emergency preparedness effort. And through that, I actually found out a lot of things, you know, in going and talking to my, to the neighbors, to a lot of the residents while I'm doing, teaching classes in the different neighborhoods, you know, you start having conversations and you find out about some different issues that comes up that concerns them. And then as I went deeper into it, I found out when the Maybell project came up, I really wanted to find out more about it, but the thing is, a lot of the dispersed, the notifications, information being dispersed was very, very minimal. And so, as part of my neighborhood association, then I started trying to push out more information. And as I started gathering information to push out, I found out more about it. Through the time when we were trying to go through the community meetings and so forth, there was very, very, it was a, it was a meeting that was kind of interesting where there was a lot of, "Okay, everybody stop talking. We don't want to hear any more of your questions because we want to tell you more, but with more of your questions, we can't tell you things." This is from the Palo Alto Housing Corps. And I just found it, you know, very, very, how do you say, censoring. They kept a lid on everything and they just wanted to disperse information that they wanted to disperse versus what we wanted to find out. And as time went on, more information came out. It was in the method of how, how this whole deal came about. So it seems like a backward method. And with that, I just, and the fact that the streets over there were all safe routes to school streets and the traffic report that came out did not support what traffic was going to be coming out from the projects. So as time just went on, it just did not, did not work out for me. And talking to neighbors and residents, you find out more of that. So then I decided, you know, to help out in getting more involved by, again, dispersing information, talking in front of council, and actually finding, trying to get funding for, for the referendum. But that wasn't just it. It was later on at another community meeting that was in my neighborhood in Barron Park, one of the city representatives, you know, just came in and did two, three meetings that they call community meetings, but they have a plan on how they want to move forward. So they give you two, I believe at the time, and said, "This is what I want. This is where you can work from." And that's good. They had a plan. But when I heard a neighbor, after everything was said and done, I heard a neighbor say, "You know what? The city's going to go ahead and do what they want to do. We should just go along with it." And I just kind of felt that was not acceptable, you know? I mean, if you're going to have a community meeting, talk more, take our ideas back, work with it, give us good reasons. So in the end, when the elections started happening and I just couldn't sit back and sit through another four years of the same old thing, when there's what I would consider beyond tipping point of a crisis, you know, where parking and traffic's our issue now that we have to address, and the only way to address it is from the center point.
How far from Maybell do you live in Barron Park?
I actually live on Matadero, which is actually all the way on the other side of Maybell.
Okay, so you weren't directly affected by the project?
No, I wasn't.
And what is your opinion of the, of what is emerging now as the replacement project?
Oh, the 30 units. The 30 units are single-family homes and it beats the 72 units that was going to be going in there. And hopefully, based on the concept plan right now that I see, we want to discover more as a neighborhood, how far, how the front houses are going to be set back. And I think this developer has really taken into consideration what had happened last year. So hopefully, we can work with them. I'm encouraged to see that it's 30 versus 40 or 46, but it's definitely something that we'd like to see, that they keep it compatible to the neighborhood, which it seems that it's a lot more compatible. And also, the oak trees that's on the property, they will hopefully be retained. So that's just some things that I have to discover further, along with my neighbors.
And you have the opinion that those 30 units are going to generate less traffic than the 15 homes and apartments?
Than the 15 homes of the single-family homes that were going to go in earlier? No, I don't think they're going to generate less traffic, but I think also on the 15 homes, there was also the 60-unit senior housing that is there and, you know, we really don't have a count of how many cars the senior home would generate. So I, and really the traffic reports, we had, the residents had their own, the city had their own, and it's hard to figure out which one, you know, if we're going with middle, just to give it some, then I think that the 30 homes might just generate midway, right?
It seems like some people look at Maybell as the tipping point that pushed the city councils to take some steps on development. There's the moratorium on PC zoning, all the traffic and parking plans that have come up, residential parking permits, shuttle routes, garages, satellite parking. Would you say that the city's on the right track now?
Yes, they are. They are on the right track. At the same time, I think they're in such a hurry. It's like a mishmash of let's get everything in there right now because, because of elections? I don't know, you know? And so it's, it's nice to see that they're going that route, and I'm very, very encouraged by it also. At the same time, I think that when you put in a development, when you do projects, whether it's housing or office space, any sort, you do have to start at the very beginning, at the concept, concept planning, to, to, to start thinking about its impacts for immediate as well as for the future, not after it's gone in. And so, yes, it is a tipping point, but I think that they're in such a hurry to get too many things out, and I worry that it's going to be just a Band-Aid again.
If you run the city council next year, then what steps would you propose to address this mishmash of proposals? I mean, what, what do you think would help at this point?
I think that, you know, you have to prioritize which ones are first in line in order to, so first, we have to prioritize what are we going to be mainly taking care of. I think the main thing to address right now is the parking and traffic, mostly parking, I think. And then go into how to, how to moderate it so that we can at least alleviate some of those issues. And that's not just parking for the employees, that's going into the neighborhoods and all of that, and as well as companies, existing companies that are there. But I think mostly moderating the developments first by making sure that if they're not fully parked, it's something that should not even be considered until they can fully park themselves, especially buildings with office spaces. And then kind of really reviewing the city's policy or the city's rule about 1,000 square feet per, for employees or for parking spots, is that even something that is realistic today?
What is your feeling about the residential parking permit program and how it's going to roll out in downtown?
I spoke to a lot of the residents in College Terrace and they really like their program. I'm encouraged that if we can get something like that for downtown, it'll be great. Right now, I also hear from other residents that are not really affected by the parking issues because they live a little bit on the outside of downtown. And so, I think that it's a good program. We need to kind of work at it to make sure that those that are living on the outside and doesn't see that will benefit them, maybe it's something that we can work with them to, I think that we still need to talk to them a little bit further and work with them and see how they would like to have it managed, how the rules are, whether they pay or not. I think one of the main issues is that most people feel like they shouldn't have to pay to park in front of their own house. So it's still a work in progress that I would have to gather information from people who are affected by it.
Do you think it's reasonable that they have to pay?
No. I, I, I think maybe a very minimal fee. Right now, I have no idea what the fee is. I know College Terrace is about 40 per year, per car. So it comes down to just thinking about, you know, how big is the house? How many bedrooms does it have? And so I think all that kind of factor has to be taken into consideration also if they rent out any part of it.
So you've talked about the concern of the residents and needing to make sure that they're on board with this type of parking plan. You haven't mentioned the businesses whose employees are part of the problem. If the neighborhood is restricted for its parking, then where do you anticipate having the employees park?
Well, I've also talked to a lot of the residents and they're very actually open to employees who actually service the local area to get a permit and park at their houses, you know, in front of their houses or in the neighborhood streets. That's not something that they're against. Actually, they're very open to that because they realize these people are working there and servicing them. It's just determining whether a resident themselves would need to pay in order to park in front of their own house. And then also determining how many permits to be available to the employees that service the area and work there.
But clearly, we've, we've got a problem that can't be solved just by issuing permits. You've got to get cars out of the neighborhoods to create the opportunity for people to park in those neighborhoods. So where do you envision the gap being filled?
Well, I would like to also see garages being part of, structures being built. Now, I actually feel that there needs to be contribution from a lot of the companies that are there whose employees are going to be parking there. So that would be definitely one or two more garages for the time being that needs to start moving.
And how do you propose the city prevent what's happened downtown from happening here in California Avenue?
Each development plan that goes in has to be reviewed carefully, conscientiously, and skeptically so that it's pushed back if it's not, I mean, downtown University Avenue is a lesson that the city should have learned on what not to do coming down over here to California Avenue. And so therefore, I think that, you know, the proposals to build high, bigger structures, higher structures with more space for offices and so forth, it should not be something that should be repeated here and down in the California Avenue. And definitely, every development project should be fully parked.
So the zoning here allows for quite a bit more development than has taken place. So when you say it shouldn't be allowed, how would you control that?
That's going to be something I'm going to have to study and work on when I get on to the council. I don't have all the answers here right now, but that is definitely something I'm going to have to work on to learn. I also feel that I need to learn about what happened in university and how not to transfer it over here.
And what about preserving retail on a place like California Avenue? How would you propose to, to accomplish that?
If anything, I would like to make sure that the right kind of retail comes in here so that they are retail that people like to visit and see. And so, keeping the integrity over here. Mixed use would be great, where you have retail on the bottom and then residences on the top. So then we keep both housing supply up and then retail shops over there. I see California Avenue as a very, very different type of downtown than what University Avenue is. University Avenue has become more trendy and more touristy, whereas I would like to see California Avenue be more, I want to use the word homey, you know, but...
Neighborhood servant.
Yes, thank you. Community, you know, it's a building community type of, where I think we've lost a lot of things such as, you know, going to shops, hardware stores, local hardware stores, local nurseries, music shops, you know, art shops, where you bump into people that you know from, from different neighborhoods and you end up having conversations and you have opportunities at that point. I would like to see California Avenue retain some of that.
But how do you bring that about?
Retail that is, that, that serves the community, that, that community likes, that...
But I mean, how do you use a council person or through city policy control that?
I, I would have to do a lot of talking with all my colleagues to see how, I know that Karen Hellman is very, very pro retail as well as Pat Bird, so even Greg Schmidt. So I would really like to ask them for their input in how we can develop more of that and then engage the property owners in terms of favoring that sort of retail. But it's going to have to engage and foster that kind of idea.
There's a view that Palo Alto is a built-out city, and yet we have mandates from A-BAG, for example, for additional housing. How would you, as a city council member, address the need to have more housing that is affordable for folks wanting to move in or wanting to downsize if they're retirees? Where would you put the housing? What kind of housing would it be?
Everybody asks about affordable and most of the developments, at least the condominiums and townhome developments that have been coming into Palo Alto, a lot of them have the BMR units. So those are the moderate affordables, if I understand that correctly. So I think more or less that supply is there for a lot of people. What we're trying to address is the lower, the tiers below that. And that's going to be very, very hard and it's going to, because land is scarce and it's not growing here anymore. So that's going to be something that I think that the, the nonprofits are going to have to work with getting grants and so forth. And, you know, if there's any way city council can help, that would be something that I would encourage helping with. However, I don't think that we can take in lieu funds for BMRs. I think that we have to enforce that there are more. And then, I've actually thought about whether developments, rather than having this moderate BMRs, if there's any way they can, I haven't worked that out because I don't know enough details, but if they can work these BMRs instead of being moderate, if there's any way that they could assign it to nonprofit property management companies where it can become for the lower tiered, the extremely low, low-low, the other tiers. I, I don't know how it would work, but I've kind of given some thought about how it could come about. But in terms of building, right now, the one, the A-BAG and all the mandates from the state is saying, "Put the housing, everything by trains and transit." I don't know if that's the wisest idea, simply because it's, it becomes too dense. And then the thing is, the thought is, if you can, if you put it in, then transit will come, public transportation will be available for you to use. I, I don't think that is realistic. I don't think it's happened. So to just limit it to a really, a small radius around transportation is, it just goes to show again, it's outside forces not knowing what is local, giving demands and ask, and putting demands on a, on a municipality that may not be able to support that.
Other than the transit corridors, then, what areas around town do you see that you would favor placing housing?
I've thought of some places, one place, but I don't know the zoning over there and of course, it might be planned for something else. But there's a part by, across from Orchard Supply.
On Charleston?
I think that's in Mountain View.
The industrial, industrial way area?
Yeah, yeah, corporation. Is that Mountain View? I thought that was Palo Alto.
Well, the line meanders around there.
It does, yeah.
And maybe something can be worked out with Mountain View since they're going through the same mandates, you know, that we might be, I mean, they can do some things that enhances that area to be housing and retail.
To shift gears a little bit to the Buena Vista Little Home Park, what, what role do you see the council playing at this point in regards to the future of that property?
I've been told that the council plays a judicial, quasi-judicial role. I think the council can come up with some suggestions and review their ordinances and, and see if there's any way to keep it as affordable location?
I believe that plays that judicial role is simply in determining whether the hearing officer in that case and his recommendations meet the legal test for approving the plan offered by the property owner. And I'm not really addressing, I'm not asking you about that. I'm asking you whether you see the city and the council playing a role in trying to work with the property owner to obtain a development there that's more suitable to what your vision is for that, for that area and communities?
I would love to see that.
What would you like to have there?
I think, I, I don't think that the homes there are, in terms of its conditions, I don't think that they might be in a good condition. And I would like to see the residents there in a place that has better condition in terms of, you know, the maintenance and, and just a place that's safer and to code. So it would be really, so I'm not quite sure how much I can say, which is why I'm stuttering over here. There's a lot of things that I would love to see over there, but at the same time, I don't want to end up...
Well, let me ask you this. Are you, are you, and maybe you don't want to answer this either, but are you open to and supportive of a project on that site that takes a similar approach to what was taken on the Maybell site, which essentially is to allow a more dense development than the zoning allows in order to obtain affordable housing or retain affordable housing in that property?
Changing the zoning, I may have an issue with. I think that the zoning right now is at RM15. And I have to look up how much, what the number is if we keep it to the zoning. Maybe just as, I might be able to, I might be open to looking at a higher zoning only if it doesn't, if we can accommodate the residents that are there now and have no impact on, you know, and the, and the impacts does not affect the neighborhood. So parking and that sort of thing has to be contained in there. So it doesn't increase traffic, parking issues and that, that, that's...
And then before we leave the, the topic of development, your view on the planned community zone and its future?
The planned community zoning, it's, it's, it's just a symptom. I, I don't think so much that it's been used right. I think it's been taken advantage of and I don't think, I think it needs to have a better process. So I look forward to see what Planning and Transportation Commission comes back with in their guidelines and policies that they're going to recommend to council. And definitely, if it's not, indefinitely, PCs are actually not necessary for office spaces, you know? I think it's very valuable for affordable housing, but I wouldn't abolish it or, you know, completely do away with it, but I would like to see a very good process and we can follow by it, so people can follow by it. And then that, it's not abused.
So would you have voted for the JNF PC?
No.
Why not?
It has 38,000 square feet of office space and only eight units.
But we get a grocery store.
And it's not really a grocery store that the people want here.
At the time, it seemed like it was, right?
It did, yeah.
And then what about the Litten, so-called Gateway Project at 101 Litten, the most recent PC?
I wouldn't have voted for it.
Because?
It's office space and it doesn't have its parking and it's too close to the street and don't think it enhances our downtown.
Turning to city staffing and management, you've said that you oppose the addition of upper management positions at City Hall. And I'm wondering, are there specific positions that you've been particularly skeptical of in terms of their addition and their effectiveness?
Well, I don't know what Chief Sustainability Officer stands for and I don't know what they do. Haven't really heard much from them. So that's one position that I don't know why they're there. And then Chief Information Officer, I haven't heard much from her either. So I, I, you see, from the outside, as a resident, looking at all this kind of positions coming in, I really don't know what they do, haven't heard much from them, what do they contribute? And why do we need to have more expenses go into salaries and so forth? So on, as a resident, I feel those are some of the frivolous expenses there that might not have needed. I think sustainability might, each department should have their sustainability officers, you know? That doesn't need to be a upper management position.
And how do you feel the city's doing in terms of hiring effective consultants? And what about the expenditure that's going towards consultants?
Consultants, in certain areas, I think consultants are needed. Say, for example, CPI, definitely we, we need a consultant for that. My only issue with consultants is now it's become everything that we don't want to, everything the management does, council or city manager, they don't want to have a say-so or they don't want to be the, the, the person that contradicts what people want, then they bring in a consultant. But then more so, sometimes the consultants, what they, what they write up is based on what national, by national criterias versus what is local to Palo Alto. And that's where my issue comes in. And so when they make recommendations, it's on the national level. And so when they make recommendations, it's on the national level. It's in comparison with national. And that's not what Palo Alto is. Um so I'd like to see better vetting of consultants and better determinations of what consultants we need and who is in our, on on the staff that is capable of um researching, discovering, and then making a, um writing up a report about what they found.
So do you think the city council has been a little lax um in overseeing the city manager and 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 the hiring or proposals of hiring consultants for various projects?
Yeah, yes.
Do you um, have you taken a position on the reduction in the council size measure DEXs?
Um I think it should remain at nine. Basically, um my understanding is that once you're on council, you have to, to get to know all the different aspects uh of what is entailed in. There's a lot of committees, there's a lot of tax, there's a lot of meetings. I think that's with seven, the council members will be overworked and they can't focus. They won't be able to, i- it's just too much to take on for seven. Um this is a growing city and I think that it should be better dispersed um so that nobody's overworked, overtaxed. Keeping it at seven is good. I mean, I'm sorry, keeping it at nine is good.
Yeah. Um as you know, I'm sure the um city's uh car sleeping, camping ordinance is on hold because of some court decisions that have raised questions about its constitutionality. Um what regulation do you support, if any, to deal with the problems that have occurred in some neighborhoods of people um parking and sleeping in their cars?
So your question was what kind of solutions do I think I have? I actually would like to see churches and other nonprofits a discussion between council and some of the um faith-based groups to see. I know there's one church that has actually at one point said, yes, some um cars, vans can come onto our site and spend the night and so forth. But I also like to see um, and I have to explore where and how and um but I'd like to actually see a park for people to park their cars and spend the night for maybe a small fee if it comes down to that. But I have to explore whether it's even something that they can do if they're sleeping in their cars. Obviously, there's expend, I mean, financial issues. So I don't know if that would be something um that they can do, but just.
When you say a park, do you mean a place where they can park? Okay.
Yes, yes.
But is there, is there a role for regulation in this? In other words, um should there be some sort of a an ordinance that um that deals with the problem that neighbors are, that the, that their neighborhoods are asking for?
Um in terms of cars being parked in the neighborhoods, um I think there should be a regulation about that. I think there should be designated places for people to park and spend the night in their, in their homes. Um I don't think that it should be within the neighborhoods, yeah. And I would regulate that.
Um I want to ask you about uh Coverley Community Center, um which is a huge asset down in South Palo Alto that's at a stalemate right now between the city and the school board, or school district. Um seems like the issue um that is blocking progress, at least as far as we can tell, um is this covenant not to develop the 1.8 million dollars that the city is giving the school district um as part of its, part of its lease? Um and I'm wondering, as a city council member, would uh, would you favor continuing that uh payment just to move forward with the negotiations? Or what is your take on what needs to happen right now to get going on?
I've read up briefly on that. Um I was given three big books, so I read briefly on that. And I think that the covenant not to develop, if we can just continue that and put that money towards building the commu- the city part of it, um you know, have the lease go on for a certain amount of years, then use that money to develop the city part of it, um the community center. Because as we've grown in the city, we don't have enough community places for the entire. I mean, we've come up with the Mitchell Library, but it's not, it doesn't have all the facilities that I'd like to see for more people with a diverse num- with diversity for more of the people here in Palo Alto. So I'd really like to see that developed. It's um, it's really sad to see it just sitting there deteriorating. And I um, I really think that something should be done. So the 1.8, you know, in terms of the lease, um we can continue. So I don't know if the not to develop is only for the school part or is it for the entire piece? Um do you happen to know?
Sure, it's for the lease of the school part, but it it applies to properties that are around the city, former elementary schools so that they wouldn't be developed. It doesn't have to do with not developing Coverley per se. So it's a payment to the school district.
And all of those sites are not gonna be developed. I mean, there's, there's no question about that. So that original purpose of keeping the district from selling off those school sites is, is now gone.
So it's a gift now. What is your ultimate vision for the site then, as far as services, schools, uh like?
I think it'd be great to have both school, a school, um more a high, more a middle school or high school than elementary. But if there's a school over there with a community center on the other side and then more playing fields. Because I hear, you know, the, what I understand is there's always fight for playing fields, you know. I mean, everybody's on a long list. And kids needs to be out in the open, doing sports. It it develops character, um re- friendships, build community and so forth. So I really think that it would be great to have something like that. And Coverley right now, when I was doing Quakeville and a lot of the emergency preparedness programs and classes, I use Coverley all the time. It's, it's um, I even went to a barroom dancing back way when, when they still had it. And it's um, it's used for many, many different community affairs. And I'd like to see the community center part of it redeveloped, built, made nicer, seismicly safe, so that people can enjoy it again and have better use of what it is today. Yeah.
Great. And I think we're pretty much out of time, so thank you very much.